Alright, is everybody excited about physics today? I'm pumped. I'm, check it out, I got my Starbucks. I got my G2 pens. Let's do some circuits. This is part one of two. Today, we're gonna kinda do the basic circuits and then the next video, we will throw in some more complicated stuff. So, first thing I'd like everybody to do, as kind of a warm-up, there's a lot of terms and symbols and things that you have to know for this unit, so let's make sure we know them all. And you don't have to fill in this. And you don't need a symbol for this or this in the circuit diagrams. But what I want you to do is pause the video and on your own, fill out as much of this chart as you can. It's like a little quiz, okay? Let's see how we do. Okay, let's go over it. You can kinda grade your own work and see how well you know all of the needed symbols, terms, and units. Okay, so variable. For charge, you'll see both a lowercase and a capital Q. A lot of times that'll be used to indicate that you have this big mass of charge. The unit, unit is coulombs, alright? And there's not really a symbol we use for circuit diagrams for that. Alright, let's go on to current. Current is capital I. Alright, and the unit is amps, so we use a capital A. And current is delta Q over delta T. Okay, now, I know this says unit, but um, this is, this is an important... This tells us what, what amps are. It's charge passing per unit time. Okay, and then the symbol, um, we use arrows. So if we had some circuit diagram and we had an arrow like that, and this is a wire, this is the direction of the current, okay? And let's also put this while we're at it. Flow of positive charge. Okay, now, we actually know that negative charge is what flows. But, a long time ago, they thought it was positive charge that flows, and it's stuck unfortunately, so the direction indicates the flow of positive charge, and you're probably used to that by now. Okay, resistance. Capital R, sometimes maybe a lowercase r in certain situations. The unit, ohms, and this is a resistor. Okay, voltage. Voltage is V. Unit is also a V. And an alternative unit, joules per coulomb. Okay, um, one volt is one joule per coulomb. Okay, and then a voltage source, we will use this symbol right here. Okay, EMF. EMF is our curly E that looks like that. And it's just a fancy way to say voltage. We usually use it when we're talking about um, internal resistance. We use it in magnetism a lot as well. But if you see that, you can just, you can just think of it as voltage, okay? It's a fancy way to say voltage. Okay, now, here's, here's where this'll come up a lot. We'll be talking about a battery. Alright, but we will then be talking about how that battery has internal resistance. Okay, and we might put terminals right there to show that. And that would be the resistance of the battery. Okay, so a lot of times this symbol goes along with us talking about EMF. Powers P. The unit, watts. Okay, or joules per second. And there's not really a symbol for it in a circuit diagram. Energy. Um, for the variable, usually we are talking about potential energy when, when we're talking about this with respect to circuits. And the unit for energy, we all know, is joules. Okay, and sometimes we'll be working with watts and then we'll be asked to talk about the energy used in a certain amount of time. Okay, and this is not on your equations page. But energy is the power times the time we use the power for. Okay, and we can prove this with units. We know that energy is joules. Power is joules per second. Time is seconds. Okay, and you can see that the seconds cancel and we are left over with joules. Okay, capacitance. Capital C. Not to be confused with the unit for charge, alright? And um, farads, capital F. Okay, sometimes you'll see like a micro farad or something like that used for capacitance. But if we're doing calculations, we need to be in farads. The uh, symbol used in circuit diagrams is very, very similar to what we have for a battery. But for the battery, um, a shorter line for the negative terminal. And that's important to note. Let's go back up here. That the longer line is the positive side of the battery. The shorter line is the negative side of the battery. So the flow of positive charge, if we're talking about current direction, would be this way out of a battery. Okay, alright, so there's all of our symbols. And hopefully you did pretty well on that little quiz. Okay, let's go on. What we're gonna do here is we're gonna take about one page of notes and then I've got example problems back here for you to work. So, we'll start with our note section here. Ohm's law is probably the most important thing we have to know in circuits. Ohm's law says that the current flowing will equal the voltage over the resistance. Okay? And a very simple equation. We have to understand this backwards and forwards. Okay, for example, if I increase the voltage, current is directly related to that. Current's gonna go up. If I say decrease the resistance, the current is also gonna go up because I'd be dividing by a smaller number right here. Alright, so the, these two things, when we change them, can get us the amps. Alright, you'll also see it written like this, V equals IR. And I believe that's how it's written on your equations page. Let's find Ohm's law. Oh no, it's written like this. Okay, this way makes the most sense because it's these things that we change to get this. Alright, so current's voltage over resistance. Okay, let's see. While I'm on this, let's also note this one. The power equation, P equals I times V. We can kinda write that off to the side here. A lot of times, we will use these two in conjunction with each other. Alright, um, some more important relationships. The wire resistance equation. If you are asked about the resistance of something, sometimes you can use Ohm's law to get it, if you need to solve for it. Other times, you might need something else. Okay, so for example, let's say we've got, say we've got this wire. Alright, and I'm gonna exaggerate the diameter of this wire a little bit, um, so we can understand this equation. If we want the resistance of just a plain old wire like this, we get it by knowing these three things. Row, L, and A. Okay, so what does that mean? This here is the length. Okay, very simply, the length of the wire we are talking about. A is right there. This is the cross-sectional area. And a lot of times, we'll be given, say, a diameter and um, or a radius of a wire and we'll need to calculate the area, so don't forget um, area equals pi R squared, and that's on your equations page. That's the area of a circle. Um, that's there if you need it. And then row is resistivity. So the resistivity is a materials property. I'll give you an example. Copper has got a resistivity of 1.68 times 10 to the negative eighth. And that would be a value that we would plug in for, for the resistivity. Okay, it's a measurement of how, how well the, the material resists the flow of electrons. Alright. So we have that. Okay, now let's go over here. This is something that gets tested on the AP test all the time. Omic versus non-omic. Alright, and here, here's a way I've seen this show up a lot. Let's say we've got a graph of voltage and current. Okay, we're gonna do some experiment. So here's V, and here's I, and we have some graph. Okay, so let's, let's bring in some materials here. Alright, we've got an amp meter and a voltage source. And let's hook a light bulb to this. Okay, so if I do this, I get, I'm on the 500 milliamp scale, so I'm at about 300 milliamps. Alright, and I'm using a 9 volt battery here. So let's say I bring in a bunch of different batteries and I swap them out and I measure the current on this light bulb for each different voltage source. I get a bunch of voltage data and I get a bunch of current data. Okay, what would that graph look like? Maybe you even did this lab in class, okay? Um... Say I bring this in. Alright, and I hook this up. Okay, this is a carbon compound resistor. Alright, they both resist the flow of electrons, but one lights up, one doesn't. When the light bulb lights up, it creates heat. Okay, that actually changes the resistivity of the metal. It changes the, the light bulb's resistance because the temperature is changing. Okay, so when that happens, we actually get a relationship that does not obey Ohm's law. Okay, so if we bring our light bulb back in. Alright, I've got this one over here hooked to a variable voltage source that you can't see because cord's not long enough here. Okay, but right now, I'm on 3 volts. Okay, let's go to 4.5. Here's 6 volts. Here's 7.5. Okay, you can see that the current is changing, the power's changing, and um, you, you can't really see it, but the resistance is changing too. Okay, you guys wanna see me blow up the light bulb? You know you do. 9 volts. 12, oh, look at that. It's all black. Okay, that was 12 volts. Um, the current was too high for the filament and it burned out the bulb. That's always fun to do. Don't try it at home, no. Okay, so let's say we graphed what I just did. Here's, here's what you would see. You would see a graph that looked something like this. Okay, this is for the bulb. Alright, and if we fit it with a curve, it would not be linear, okay? This is non-omic. Okay, and it's got a changing slope. Alright, now, for the carbon compound resistor, if I had the same graph, here's current, here's voltage. And my students do this lab in class to see that this is true. Okay, you'll get some data points like that and they will be roughly linear. If you take a straight edge and you fit a line to that, you can get the slope. Okay, alright, now this is a constant slope. Okay, and this means that this thing is omic. In other words, it is obeying Ohm's law. Alright, so um, why is slope so important? Okay, anytime you're asked to analyze a graph and think about slope, go back to what your math teacher taught you. Just even write it down on the page. Okay, rise over run. So the rise is measured in volts. The run is measured in current. Okay, voltage over current is resistance. Okay, that's just this equation rearranged, okay? You can see that I divides over here and you get this. So slope is equal to resistance. Alright, and on this graph, you can see, alright, if I put um, tangent lines, if I put a tangent to the curve right there, I get that slope, but look at this tangent line. That's a higher slope, so this is a higher resistance value. This is a lower resistance value. Okay, that curved graph shows us that the resistance is changing. Okay, and I've seen this show up a few times on AP questions. That's very important to know. Alright, let's discuss internal resistance for a second. And let's draw a simple circuit. Okay, let's say we've got some voltage source and a resistor and some wires. Okay? Alright, now, when you see this, this diagram is not taking into account the internal resistance of the battery. So, this battery right here, if we connect wires and a light bulb to it, the light bulb is not actually the only resistor in the circuit. The bulbs got resist, or the battery's got resistance too. Okay, and that resistance kicks in once the current starts to flow. Okay, so what we actually do is we draw another resistor and we put these terminals right here. And those terminals indicate that we are, we are talking about this whole thing as the battery now. Okay? Alright, then we get into EMF. So, the EMF, and we can even write that out if we want. The EMF is the potential the battery has without the current flowing. So if I take this battery and I come up to it with a volt meter and I attach my volt meter right here, it will say about 9 volts. Okay, that is the EMF. There's no current flowing. That EMF is equal to the terminal voltage, okay, which we sometimes put a little t down here, minus I times little r. Okay? This right here, lowercase r, alright, we could go up here and we could add that in, lowercase r right there. That is, that is the internal resistance. And what happens is our terminal voltage, sorry, this is a plus sign. Our terminal voltage will be the voltage that is actually available to the rest of the circuit. Okay? So, if we wanna know the voltage available to the rest of the circuit, we can say VT is equal to our EMF minus IR. Okay, and we know that V equals IR. So this is another, this is another term for voltage here. Okay, and what this represents is, it's kinda like the voltage loss due to this resistor right here. And you might also notice that as the current increases, there's gonna be more and more voltage loss through the internal resistance of the battery. Okay? And then, now we can figure out how much we have left over for this resistor over here. Okay, so these are all of the basic circuit things we need to get started. And we're gonna do a few problems and we're gonna work on series parallel a little bit um, in some of those problems and then the next review session, part two, we'll get into some more complicated stuff. Alright, so let's turn over to the other side. And let's work on graphs for a second. Okay, so a few graphs that I've seen show up. A power versus current graph. Okay, and we might be asked about the voltage. So, we have this equation, P equals IV. And you know that voltage is equal to power over the current. And you notice powers on the y, current is on the x. So this is our rise and this is our run. Okay, so the slope is our voltage. We need to be able to look at any graph and analyze what the slope means. Okay, voltage versus current. Um, I'm gonna cross this one out because we kinda did that on the other side. We know the slope is our resistance for that one. Okay, what if I do something like, some kinda weird graph like this? I saw this on a multiple choice question once. What if we have a set of axes here? Whoops, sorry. And we graph one over the current. We graph the inverse current there. And we graph the resistance down here. They like to throw weird stuff like this at us. Why we would ever graph that, I honestly don't know. But I've seen it on a question before. Okay, and then let's say we had some line or different, different lines on there and we need to analyze the slope. What does the slope of this graph mean? Okay, let's start with this. Rise over run. Okay, so rise is one over current. Run is our resistance. Okay, and we have a fraction in a fraction. Oh my gosh, what do we do? Cry? Go home? Sleep? No, none of the above. We copy dot flip. Okay, so to copy dot flip, first of all, I'm gonna make this a fraction. R over 1 is the same thing. And I'm gonna copy the top fraction, 1 over current. Just rewrite it like that. Then I'm gonna put a dot and then I'm gonna flip the bottom fraction, 1 over R. Okay, so I get this weird thing where I have 1 over I times R. And again, this is equal to my slope. Okay, and if we think about it, a current times a resistance is equal to what? Well, it's voltage. So over here, I could say that this is equal to the inverse of the voltage. Okay, now, it's a really weird way to graph it, but this was on, this, I, like I said, I saw it on an AP question. Okay, so the slope of this graph gets us the inverse of the voltage. So if we calculated the slope doing linear regression on our calculator, something like that, we could then inverse that and find the voltage. Okay. Let's work a couple multiple choice problems. Here, we've got two problems and we've got series and parallel circuits. Okay, so um, you've been taught the rules of series and parallel circuits in class. Let's see how well you remember those. And let's pause the video. And I want you to try both of these problems and here's what you need to do. This is multiple choice. You have about two minutes per multiple choice on the AP test. So I want you to set a timer or look at your phone and give yourself four minutes and work on these questions. Okay, go. Okay, let's see how we did. Okay, so this is kind of a weird circuit here because we've got the positives of the batteries facing each other. So this one's got more voltage than this one. So what's actually happening here is this battery is pushing charge through this battery in a way that it doesn't wanna go. Okay, so we're actually kind of wasting batteries here. Um, the only time we actually do this is in a battery charger when we would oppose the voltages like that. I, I shouldn't say the only time, but that's really the only example I can think of. Okay, so this wants to know um, which can result in an increase of current right here. Okay, we've got this parallel in this series here. So let's see, reversing the connections to the 14 volt battery. Alright, let's turn the 14 volt battery around. And if we do that, these will be working together to push charge in the same way. The total um, voltage acting here would now be 16 volts. Okay, so that is a correct answer. Okay? Alright. Removing the 2 volt battery. If we do that, that is actually um, going to increase the current. Okay, because right now, since these are opposing each other, we have 12 volts working to push charge through this circuit. If I remove this, we're actually gonna have the full 14 working there. So those are the two answers. Okay, now, why are, why are these wrong? Rearranging the resistors so that all three are in series. Okay, well, first of all, if we take these two and we have them in parallel, their resistance is actually less than if Y and Z are in series. So if the resistance is less in series, what happens is the current goes down, okay? Um... So if I make this all a series circuit, the resistance goes up and the current is gonna drop. Okay, in parallel, there is less resistance. Alright, so that current's actually gonna go up. I think I might've said that wrong the first time. Okay, so more, more resistance in series. Alright, removing the branch containing resistor Z. If we take Z out, we will actually reduce or we will actually increase the resistance of this part of the circuit. With Z in there, there is more paths for the current to take, thus decreasing the resistance. Okay, and we know how resistance affects current. Okay, now let's look at this one. This is a key example of eliminating wrong answers. Okay, I can solve this problem with no math just by looking at this over here and I'll show you how. And then maybe we'll prove it with math. Okay, so um, we've got these different resistors, we've got some series, we've got some parallel. Okay, and- Okay, and we want to rank the potential difference. First thing we have to know is that the more resistance we have, the more voltage we're going to take from our supply here when we're looking at the series resistors. Okay, the second thing we need to know is that for a parallel section, the voltage is the same. Okay, so let's look over here, we've got R and two R. R and two R must be equal. And if, if the answer choice doesn't have that, then it's wrong. So here, that one's wrong because it doesn't have an equal for R and two R. Which other one's wrong? Um. This one. Okay, now these two are possible correct answers. Okay, so let's look at, let's look further here. Um, four is greater than three, is that true? Bigger resistance is going to take more voltage, that's the answer. Okay, here it's got um four less than three. So I actually solved that without doing any math. Now if you wanted to see the math, okay, for that, it's this, these ended up being two thirds R. Okay, so we could redraw our circuit with this portion being two thirds R. And it would be the smallest resistance. Okay, therefore it's got the smallest voltage um from the supply. Okay, but you don't even need to do this, like I said before. So look at the answers before you get too crazy with your math. It might, it might, you, you might be able to solve it just by thinking about it. Okay. Let's go on to the next page. Alright, here I've got a couple ranking tasks for you. Um, your teacher might have, might be giving you these to work on in class regularly. If not, this will be some really good new practice for you. Get used to seeing problems that look like this, your traditional circuit drawings. And like this, you will see this a lot. These, these diagrams are realistic diagrams. Okay, wires actually come like this. Okay, you don't see wires like this very often. So occasionally in problems, you're going to see these and you're going to have to, you're going to have to know what, what you're looking at here. Are these series, are they parallel, are they both? Okay, so what I want you to do for this ranking task, pause it and work on your own till you're finished with it. Okay, let's see how we did. Okay, so first of all, let's look at the arrangements. Um, we're not talking about resistors in series and parallel here. We're talking about voltage sources in series and parallel. So they actually work the same as resistors. Voltage, voltages in series like these. See the negative, positive, negative, positive, and then background. Um, these voltage sources just simply add up. So if this is three volts right here, if these are each three volts, this total is going to be a nine vol, a nine volt battery. Okay? Um, and so what happens here is the more voltage, the more current through this, the more current, the more power. Okay, and power is going to be our brightness level. So um in contrast, if we look at these, let's say these are all three volt sources. Okay, this whole thing is still just going to add up to nine, to three volts. Okay, so the advantage of this, oh, and this one's three volts as well. Okay, so whether I have one or three three volt batteries, they both get a total of three volts. The advantage here is this is going to last longer. It's simply got more electrons to deliver to the circuit over time. Alright, the voltages are not actually going to add. Okay, so the brightest, here's the answer. It goes C, then B. And if you wanted to put dummy numbers to it, okay, make up numbers, this would be six volts. Then um we have A, D, and E. Okay, they're all going to be the same. So A, D, and E, these three here, they all have a total of three volts being delivered to the bulb. Okay, alright, now we'd want to explain that in terms of the voltage contributing to the current and the current contributing to the power. So we could, we could do that in our reasoning. I'm not going to take time on the video to actually write out a reasoning. Okay, but um usually on an AP questions, we'd, question, we'd get points for our ordering and then more points down here for our reasoning. So we'll, we'll show how to do a good reasoning on the next problem. Okay, now this one, on your own. Your teacher has the key to this. So they might be giving you points for doing some of this on your own and then checking with the key or grading what you did. Okay, so I'm going to let you do this and again, check with your teacher to see if you are correct on that. Okay. Last problem we're going to do for this review session. Let's look at a possible FRQ. Okay, so we've got some, some parallel, some series here in the same circuit and we've got a battery. And the circuit contains a battery with negligible internal resistance. Okay, so we're not dealing with that, which is nice. And we've got these three resistors of different values. But we're not given actual um Ohm values or voltage values for that matter. Part A, rank the currents in the three resistors from greatest to least. Number one being the greatest. Okay, so this is actually a ranking task within an FRQ. What I want you to do is do all of this and this should take you about, let me say ten minutes. Okay, so I want you to pause it, give yourself ten minutes to do this, to work it out and then I will put up the answer. Okay, I'm going to show you the answer. Now, could you just copy down everything I write? Yes, will that help you to study and learn? Absolutely not, you will get nothing from this video if you just copy what I put down. Okay, so make sure that you did this on your own first and I would recommend taking out a red pen maybe and grading what you did. Alright, so here's, let's look at the answers. Okay, we'll worry about that in a second. Let's first talk about the current. Here's the ranking. Alright, this gets the most current. These two are going to get less. Okay, so you're probably going to get one point for having the ranking correct. So if you have that correct, give yourself one. Okay, then let's look at the justification. Resistor A will receive the total current. You're probably going to get a point for that. Alright, this is an old physics B question and I do have the scoring on it. Um, it would probably be scored a little bit different if it was a physics one question. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of guessing on the scoring a little bit here, but I, it's pretty accurate, I think. Okay, it's going to receive the total current because there's no branches here. Alright, there's no, there's no splitting of the current. Then the other two gets a little complicated. So if I'm going to diagram the flow of the current, it's going to go here and then it's going to split. Okay, and it's going to split because of the junction rule. The junction rule applies to RB and RC. Okay. Using this correctly, specifically stating junction rule will get you one point if you used it correctly. Um, I've seen on a lot of scoring, even if you explain it correctly, but you don't state the junction rule, I've seen people lose points for that. Okay, the current will divide and RC will receive more current because it has a lower resistance. Okay, so this part right here, the lower resistance is probably going to get you a point. Path of least resistance, right? More current's going to go down this branch than this branch because it has a lower resistance. Okay, and then by the way, the currents are going to come together and add back up right here, equaling the total, which will be the same as the current in this part of the circuit. Okay, moving on. Now we're going to rank the voltages, which I think is harder to do. Okay. Here you go, you're going to get one point for having the ranking correct and you might get a point for having these two be the same ranking. So I'm going to give a point for that just because I'm making up the scoring anyway. Okay, and again, that point is for having B and C have the same voltage. Okay, here's why. Let's look at these two. Voltages for a parallel, we know are the same. Okay, that's what that's for. Now why is this voltage greater than this voltage? It has to do with resistance. If you get the equivalent resistance of these, okay, by doing your fractions, you will get three halves R. Okay, so that means my new circuit is going to look like this, can be drawn like this. So here, I replace the parallel section with just a single series resistor. And I got three halves R. So since this resistance is less than this one, it is going to take up less of the voltage. So this one, since it's a bigger resistor, is going to require more of that total voltage from here. Alright, and that's basically what I said right here. You're going to get one point for that. Okay, also just to find why these have two. So I said in addition, RB and RC are in parallel, which means they will have the same voltage. This is due to the loop rule. Okay? So if we look at this up here, we've got two loops here. Here's my first loop. Okay, going around through here. And we know that this voltage is fixed. Okay, whatever that gets is just what it gets. Okay, even though we have two loops here. Okay, so here's loop one and here's loop two. Let's say this is using three volts. Okay? Um, if that's using three volts and we have a total of, um, let's see. These are going to have lower voltage. Okay, let's say we have a total of five volts. That means that around this loop, the voltage drop has to be a total of five. So there's three lost here. Two more has to be lost here, that makes a total of five. Furthermore, if I look at the big loop, okay, I still have to have three lost here, that means I still have to have two lost here. Okay, now the easy way to say it is, hey, in parallel, they have the same voltage. But in physics two, that doesn't always get us all the points. We need to understand why the loop rule applies as well. Okay, so this is the simple answer right here. Okay, but we, we might not get points for just saying that. We need to, we need to talk about how the loop rule works as well. Okay, hope that video was helpful. Um. It is much easier to do these in class when you have the opportunity to ask questions back. Um, but I hope you were, you were able to understand it even though you could not do that. And um I hope you learned a little bit about circuits. Thanks for watching.